Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Selaya is absent. Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We all stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you that you've allowed us to come together. We thank you for your protection for the citizens of Florence. And we thank you, Father, that you'll give us wisdom and knowledge to do those things that are pleasing to you and that are best for everybody. We ask confident peace for those bereaved families. And we thank you for all things in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. In the back there are sheets for sign up for speaking. If you haven't filled one out, there's one in the back if you wish to address the council. If not, I will ask at the end of the two that I have if anybody would like to address the council. Ruth Harrison.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Saturday Open Air Market at Areola Square on Main Street. Before I conclude my own comments, I'd like to read a letter written by Ruby Carter. She says, "My name is Ruby Carter. I sell eggs at the farmer's market at Areola Square each Saturday. I will not move to a new location which has weekday participation. Besides, the times are bad for fresh eggs. My customers rely on my being at Areola Square. Also, I will not apply for a permit especially if a cost is involved. Moving an established activity to a new location with times and day changes is a sorry method of introducing a new property. I no longer have night vision, so am unable to attend a town meeting." She signed it, Ruby V. Carter. So I'll continue with my own comments now. I have suggested that the name be changed from Farmer's Market to Artisan Market. Most of the vendors make the items they sell, and because of that, most will qualify for licensing exemptions. This Saturday morning activity on Main Street attracts visitors and locals to the downtown location. The vendors and their wares add life to Florence on the weekends during the cooler months. Please encourage the artisan market to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie Keith?
Karen.
Karen?
I'm one of the vendors at the farmer's market. A lot of the, well, all of the vendors that are down there have told me that the market changes to different locations, and during the week, they will not come. And we have been there where we're at in that same location for over 12 years now. And we're still pulling people in who don't even know we're there because there's no advertising to help us out. What this is trying to do is counterproductive. We're trying to draw people in. This is a Main Street town. You take it off a Main Street, put it on a side street, people aren't going to be able to find it. If you don't want us running it like we are now through Christie Cox, I take care of filling out the forms of the new people that show up. You can, could hire or put somebody as a liaison between you and us. And that's so that everybody knows what's going on. I mean, we were just handed this letter two weeks ago. We asked the lady what it's all about. We asked her pointed questions, and she couldn't answer it because she didn't know anything about anything. Is the town council trying to kill the farmer's market in this town? I'd like to know that. Because with this letter, it seems that's what you want. You want to move it off Main Street? You want to change the times? And like I said, none of the people that are selling there now are going to show up at it. They either can't because it's during the week or won't.
Thank you. Does there any other member of the audience that has anything they'd like to say during the call to the public? Hearing none, our calls close to the public.
Item six, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, resolution number 1483-14, approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, accepting public utility and Roseways easements related to the development of Johnson Ranch Estates, project and associated infrastructure in the southeast area of Florence, Arizona. Item B, authorization to purchase one Chevrolet Tahoe from Midway Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $30,874.52 to be used as a DUI vehicle for the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety Funding Award. Item C, approval of the acceptance of the register of demands ending October 31, 2014 in an amount not to exceed $2,654,135.4. Mayor, member of council, that is your consent agenda this evening.
Does any member of the council wish anything taken off the consent agenda?
I don't really want it taken off, but on item B, I just want to make a comment that that vehicle's not costing the town anything. It's coming from the state. So there's no financial impact on the town, and we could use another vehicle.
Any other discussion? Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? See, in a moment, I'll call, need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Excuse me, mayor. Who seconded the consent? Thank you. Apologize. Item seven, unfinished business. Item A, resolution number 1484-14, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, establishing and adopting an adaptive reuse program under the authority granted by the adopted Town Core Infill Incentive Plan. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, council, this item was previously presented to you during two work sessions that we had. The second work session, there were also members of a couple of commissions here present. Subsequent to those work sessions, we made some minor changes based on the comments that we heard from those work sessions, and we went back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have sent you a favorable recommendation on this revised version of the adaptive reuse policy. Now, since we started this process, we've seen a lot more attention in the media. And really Florence, Tempe, and Phoenix are the three major jurisdictions that are really taking off on a program like this. And in fact, Phoenix kind of led the way with some of the stuff that they're doing. And city of Tempe actually started developing their program right after we started developing our draft. And their program that they're putting together is extremely similar to ours. And you can see why folks are doing it. Here's an example of a former antique shop in Tempe that got converted into Oregano's. But it required actually 12 or more variances to do that, to modify the lot. Because the building, as you can see, or if you're familiar with the site, set right up on the road on, I believe it's on University. Really limited parking, limited landscaping on the site, smaller building. So there were a lot of challenges in doing that. And so even Tempe, as we've realized, could benefit from a program like this. In the city of Phoenix, really the project that's getting the most attention under the adaptive reuse program is the revitalization of the old Beef Eaters Restaurant, which was around there forever. The celebrities, very famous people, used to go to that establishment. In recent decades, at least for quite some time, it sat there empty and getting vandalized on camelback. Now it's gone to a major renovation process in part because their program made it a little bit easier to do a program like this. So, and you can see that, a couple of images there. So Phoenix, Tempe programs, our program, they deal with some building code issues, primarily greater utilization of existing building code for existing buildings, some special provisions for plumbing, plan review, the permit process, building across property lines. Parking is a really big thing. The challenges of meeting all the parking on a small site, as you saw in those couple of examples. Paving requirements, some options to have, some different types of paving requirements, and also modification of landscape requirements. And also some flexibility on dealing with the infill lots and some incentives on dealing with those lots. Our program is a little bit unique because it is, it would be adopted under the infill incentive district that we already have. So it applies within this area, but it applies to a specific scenario. So Territory Square is all new land. That's exempt from the program. Some of the newer subdivisions that have been platted but not developed also are not enjoying all the benefits of the program. It's really geared to the existing buildings, which in downtown, it would probably apply to the majority of the buildings established, except for the newer ones along the main highways. And then also, there is in this program a modified development impact fee incentive that would apply just to approximately 50 vacant single-family lots that are in the core of town within subdivisions that have been platted for decades and lots that have never had any homes on them. So it would encourage kind of us hopefully growing a little bit more from the core and outward. Thing to remember though is that this program does one thing, and it makes it automatic, but you still have the benefit of the infill incentive district that applies to this whole area. So on a case-by-case basis or a subdivision-by-subdivision basis, if somebody were to come in and say, "Hey, I'm looking at this property. It's not automatically covered under adaptive reuse, but here's what I'd like to do," we can still bring that through and address what their special conditions may be for that project. So we still have that tool. Here's a picture showing some of the alternative parking services. So what we did do is address the concerns that I heard is one that we really didn't want to apply the incentive across the board to all the lots, but really tried to focus on the older buildings and the infill lots. That we took out provisions regarding drainage on the lots and also took out some of the provisions that might have provided a little bit more flexibility pertaining to some of the fire or electrical provisions. So we made those comments, and again, we went to the Planning Commission, and they fully supported it. And we're looking forward to adopting this program and kind of being, continuing to be leaders in the pact. I think this, along with other things that we're doing, D.C. zoning districts and flexibility in the general plan, Territory Square, PUD mechanism, sometimes the infill incentive district, you know, we've got some tools in our toolbox to encourage development, hopefully. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any questions they'd like to ask Bill?
Yes. I noticed we're still going to require, if somebody wants to put in a, it says now if they're replacing a door, an existing door, or a window, or something like that, they can do that, is the way I read it. But if they're putting in a new window or a new door, then they have to have an architect or an engineer draw up the plans. Then they have to hire a licensed contractor to do the job. And I'm wondering, you know, on projects that small, you know, as long as they do it up to code, I don't know why we're still requiring them to have an engineer, you know, take, in other words, a $500 or $600 job and cost them by the time they finish with their architect and engineering and hiring a licensed contractor, it's going to drive the price up to where it's, you know, it's going to be in the at least a couple of thousand or more dollars for something that they could do theirself, owner, builder. And they could draw the plans theirself. I mean, you know, you're talking cripples and headers. As long as it's up to code, you know, and our inspector sees that, you know, it's up to code, those are the things that I thought, you know, we were also going to work on rather than just the impact fees and a few other tweaks that we did. But that, you know, I think if we're serious about, you know, helping people, you know, get some of these old buildings up to snuff, I think we need to look at that, you know. I mean, give them a little more leeway on something like that.
Any other member? Bill, I got to agree with you on that. It seemed ludicrous that somebody replaced a door in a commercial or a private home or a window.
Well, they said on replacement, it's okay. It's if they're going to cut in a new door or a new window. But like I say, as long as it's up to code, I don't see why, because I know we used to accept hand-drawn plans, and I guess we don't anymore. But anyway, whatever.
You're right. It's causing the addition or the addition of a window or something like that. It's running the price up so much that people can't afford to do it. Mark, you got any suggestions on that, on how we could actually keep the costs down to people and still stay within the law?
I'd be happy to respond. I think you have a question on the end.
Well, let's go this way.
I'd be happy to respond, mayor, members of the council. Our building codes that we've adopted, our process that we've adopted is actually more lenient than the state process, but we have to follow the state law. And specifically, I wanted to read ARS 32143. Construction documents are usually composed of plans, drawings, details, specifications, and occasionally other contract documents. Construction documents must bear the stamp of a registered architect or a registered professional engineer when the project involves a non-exempt structure. It goes on in other parts of the law to define what is exempt or non-exempt.
Okay, but it said a simple structure, right? Beyond a simple structure, is that what you added up?
If the project involves a non-exempt structure. So the definition of that, just to simplify it, is if there's a situation where there's a residential project, a very small-scale commercial project up to some discretion of the building official, which would be like a simple replacement of a door, simple replacement of a window, modification of a plumbing fixture, if there's a minor modification like that. There's a few scenarios where the state statutes allow you not to have a plan that's prepared by an architect or an engineer and stamped. In most cases, especially on a new build or a major tenant improvement, or when your occupancy loads are higher. So whenever you have, that's another threshold. And so when you have a building that has a higher public occupancy load, so there's a difference between an office where it's going to be the one person operating there versus a restaurant, for example, or a place of assembly, the threshold for those types of establishments is higher, probably for obvious reasons. So we are still bound by the state statutes. We can make our process easier, and one of the things that's in the program here is what they call the evaluation process. And some, a few other cities are putting that together, but it's a process where as the, we can, for a smaller-scale project, we can get the plans put together. They can be stamped and sealed, and we can utilize that as the plan review process. And we can construct based on those documents and do the permits and inspections off of that versus us really doing a double plan review. So they're certifying, they're doing an extra level of certification. Now you do, when you're dealing with these older structures, though, you know, there's a lot of challenges involved in that. So, you know, it is important to have an architect or engineer on board for various reasons, for cost-saving reasons, but also it is, in most cases, required by state law.
You know, I don't know if you were here when the Dennis Building that they're down by your house, Tom, when they were redoing that, were you here then?
I just missed that one, I believe.
Because they didn't have an engineer on it, I don't believe. And when they started cleaning those bricks and everything, the thing fell in on them. And their architect or structural engineer should have been able to see that. And I don't know if they had one or not at that point, but portion of that northwest corner one fell in while they were working on it, cleaning the bricks and everything, which was very dangerous. Tara, did you have something?
No, he actually addressed what I was going to say.
So, I do.
Okay, Tom.
What you're going to do is cause people doing a minor job, putting a new window in. If they can't just draw it out, bring it down, and show it to you guys, have your guys come out and inspect it. If they got to get a structural engineer, et cetera, to do this kind of stuff, an architect, et cetera, they're going to do it themselves without even telling you. I think we have to simplify it.
Well, I've been in contact with a couple of other towns, and they tell me that they allow the hand-drawn plans. And so you say it's state law. I guess I want to, I guess I'd like to request to see that state law. And because if that's the case, then those towns are violating the law.
Well, mayor, members of the council, I just want to be clear. And the section of the code is ARS 32143. But there are provisions to allow the smaller-scale work subject to the determination of the building official that the work is going to be done to code and safe. So changing out of-
So our building official, that's our building official, you're saying, right?
If you get to the scenario of where you have a small-scale project, okay? And you want to change out a window, like the vice mayor indicated, that can be done in a simple, "Hey, I want to change out the window. Here's what I'm doing," and it's to code.
We're saying put a new window in, not replacing over it.
Yes, absolutely. Mayor, vice mayor, so if you're looking at cutting into a wall, which may or may not be a structural wall, may not be an engineered wall, then obviously there's going to be a higher level of review that's going to be necessary so that you're not impacting the structural integrity of that wall. And if there's already a window there, there's already a door there, and it's clear that it's not a structural situation, that's an easier fix to do.
Well, let me ask you this, Mark. Going to what Tom had brought up about the replacing or inserting a new window in a wall, do we have the capability and the staffing that you have today to be able to go out and look at somebody where they want to put a window in their house to determine if that is a structure, a wall, a wall that could be cut in or shouldn't be cut in?
Well, mayor and council, certainly there are cases where folks ask our inspectors to go out and to look at things and do a pre-occupancy inspection and things like that. I do think that we need to be cautious of what our liability would be because they're not, our inspectors are not architects and they're not engineers. So if they say, "Yeah, it looks like you could do this here," and something were to go wrong, then we probably would be getting the bill for the damages.
I agree with that.
Anybody that knows what they're, I mean, to put in a door or a window, you brace the top of the wall, then you cut it out. You put in your cripples and your headers, and then you can take your jacks out or your braces, whatever you've been using to brace it up, and you finish it off. It's, even if it's a bearing wall, as long as you put the proper headers on there properly and your cripples, you're, you know, it's on a window or a door. It's pretty basic, I mean, but whatever.
I think part of our code was geared towards the town providing advice to the public. And I think it was brought up a lot about fly-by-nighters coming in and doing a shipyard, you know, bad job on place, not having any recourse against the people. I think it was also the handyman that's not licensed or insured. I think a lot of our code is geared towards that, to again protect the homeowner or the business owner from having somebody unqualified do the work that says they're qualified to do. And I think that's where a lot of our code comes from. If I'm, am I correct there, Mark?
Mayor, council, I would agree. And that's why both the state law and our codes allow a lot more leeway if somebody's doing a residential project. You can do owner occupied, you can do the work yourself. Because again, that threshold is not there, that you're inviting the public to come into your establishment. You know, there's different levels of liability, there's different levels of expectations of public safety. So, and I don't disagree with Member Hawkins, obviously, that somebody who is well-versed in construction, as Councilmember Hawkins is or other folks, it may not be a difficult job for them. But, you know, over the years of doing this, we have come across folks that changing out a door or cutting in a window is not necessarily, you know, something that they should have been able to do.
I think, and looking at it from our perspective as a council, we're looking at the liability. And Bill, I understand what you're saying, you know, but I've never put in a wall or a door or a window in an adobe wall where you'd actually cut it out. And I would have some concern that how old or how much termite damage is done in that adobe. And it's something we have to look and say, you know, are we willing to send one of our staff out to say, "Oh, yeah, go ahead and do it, because I know I can't do it. And if I tried, for sure that wall's going to come down."
Okay, well, I wasn't, you know, adobe, that's a whole different ballgame. I mean, yeah, I wouldn't go cutting into an adobe wall myself. I'm talking about framed buildings, you know, or center block buildings. That's a whole different ballgame than adobe. I can see where on adobe, you want to go the extra step. But there again, we have never been sued, ever, in the history of Florence, for a building not being engineered or whatever. It's never happened. I've checked it over and over and over. And so, you know, everybody, you know, keeps bringing up liability. As long as it's drawn up properly, just because it doesn't have an architect's or an engineer's stamp on it for another $2,000, if it's still up to code, that's the point I'm making here, you know. It's, but, you know, I guess we'll just-
Yeah, I don't think you can really make distinctions. I think from a liability, there's a first time for everything. People are into the suing business this day, not so much like they used to be. But I think for protection and safety issues and liability issues that we have to really follow the code. And of course, we would love for people not to go to a lot of expense, but sometimes our hands are tied, and for the safety of the public, we almost have to follow the guidelines, the state codes as well as our codes. guidelines, the state codes as well as our codes.
Well, I know up in, I guess, I don't know when we really implemented this requiring everything to be engineered and an architect's drawing, but I know up until just, I think it was a couple of years ago, people could bring in their own drawings on a, a new structure, and there wasn't any problem. I mean, I'm not talking about a full house, but I'm talking about, you know, storage rooms, garages. I mean, we haven't been sued over any of those. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to make it easier for people to get things done, that's...
You brought up something...
...figure out a way.
You brought up something in your presentation and you're referring to fire. What were you referring to lessening off on fire?
Mayor, members of the council, they were concerned. In the previous version of the program, there was some language in there about, about firewalls and, and when fire systems may be required, and we, and we took that out to, to fall back on whatever the code is going to, is going to require. So we didn't specifically address any modifications of that or put in flexibility in dealing with that on the fire issues, because as we've seen, now really, that's probably our biggest concerns with buildings in the, in the downtown area. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, they just follow whatever the code happens to be. Now, this is existing building, building code, so there is going to be still some, some leeway, because dealing with a structure that was built 50 years ago is a lot different than, than building a brand-new structure.
And, and when you were doing this and putting this together, you consulted with the fire department on that?
Absolutely. We've been consulting with the other, with the other departments, International Code Council, and also Economic, Economic Development, and also Local First Arizona, which kind of is an organization that helped to spur the activities of the Phoenix, Phoenix Program, because some of these projects that I've shown you are kind of, you know, were, were, worked under that program. But we consulted with them as well, because one of their big concerns is not only promoting local businesses, which is a big deal for us downtown in particular, but getting a lot of these older buildings occupied by these small local businesses.
Now, in, in some of the programs I've read about up in Phoenix area, they actually have architects on, on call through the municipalities. Have we taken a look at that where it'd be a less cost to the applicant by having something associated with the town where the architect could actually take a look at their plans?
Mayor, Council, I'm familiar with a couple of programs like that, but they, they happen to be in very urban, highly populated areas, where you do have an abundant number of architects and engineers, landscaped, registered landscape architects, other professionals around. We're not quite to that level, level yet, even, even within the, the region here, but it's something that we definitely could, could explore further down the road.
It seems to me if, does Coolidge have the same kind of codes that we have where the architect and the engineers required?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, yes. Now, people may be on a slightly ver- different version of the codes, but the state statutes are going to come, be applicable to every single jurisdiction in the state of Arizona.
And Casa Grande and Eloy, I would assume also.
Abs- absolutely.
Maybe that's a way that we can go to that, where we have an architect and an engineer on standby, if we cooperate and communicate and combine with these other municipalities, if they run into the same problems with a small merchant or homeowner that needs something done, where it won't be so costly to them.
Well, isn't there, what's, what's the limitation on using an ar- I mean, a licensed contractor? Isn't it $700 or $500 or something on a project? Is there some limit on that?
I believe...
Where, where you have to, the contract, or whoever's doing the work has to be licensed?
I, I believe there is, there's a financial limit on it, and then of course, anything that is non-residential requires of it, so a commercial project is going to require a commercial, a commercial contractor to do the work. So there's a financial amount, but also the distinction in whether...
Even if it's, even if it's just a $500 deal, because it's a commercial building, they still have to use a commercial contractor? If it's under that limit?
There may be, there may be an exemption there, Member, Member Hawkins, that I'd have to look into, but in majority of the cases on a non-residential project, it would, it would trigger a commercial contractor to do, to do the work.
Okay, well, then, on the, do you know what the limit is?
I believe you are, are correct in the, in the, in the ballpark of this, of the seven...
Thought it was, I thought it used to be 700, they might have lowered it, I don't know.
I believe that is, that's the ballpark.
Okay, then who, I know I've heard complaints from people around town that when they bring some, a project in, that we make an estimate on it, what we think it should cost, and we base everything on that, rather than what it's actually going to cost them. And I'm wondering, so who's going to make the decision on, let's say they are putting in a door, and it, you know, the door costs them 300, and then the framing and the labor to put it in costs them up to the hu- you know, the rest of the amount, 700, let's say.
Sure.
Would that be okay, or are we going to say, well, no, if you hired a contractor and you had an architect, it would be a $3,000 job? You know, if they can show that they can do it for 700, then, you know, I think we should be flexible enough to go with that, I mean, at a, at a least.
I appreciate that comment. And Mayor and Council, on the, on the, on the permit form, there is a space for the applicant to put their estimated value of, of the project. And they, and they fill that in, and nine times out of 10, that is, that's completely accurate. Occasionally, you'll see a project come in that maybe it's a $50,000 project, and they put 5,000, you know, $10,000 as, as, as the value, and then we have to have some discussion about that. Ultimately, ultimately, if there's not an agreement, you can actually refer to International Code Council, a table on, on valuations, and it'll tell you specifically what, what that project is. So it'll look at the occupancy, the type of work that's being constructed, and it will tell you how to determine the, the valuation. But again, nine times out of 10, if they fill that slot in and it looks like that's a reasonable cost of that project, we'll go with that estimate of the value.
And if all else fails, they can come to the council and ask for a variance or whatever.
Well, Mayor, Mayor and Council, actually, when it comes to plan reviews and, and even permits, even the town manager has some flexibility in, in that case. Now, if it's going to go over X amount, or if it's going to involve impact fees, then you're, then you're correct, they would probably come back to, to you to have that discussion.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions? Hearing none? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1484-14.
Second. We have a motion to adopt Resolution 1484-14. Any other discussion? The only thing I can say is, and I am going to vote in favor of this due to the fact it is making a little bit easier for the people. We're still trying to work towards it, maybe we haven't got it down as far as we need to go, but I'd like to see this project go through. I think it's very important to the, the town to get this done, and if this is helping, we got to try it. That's my opinion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, new business. Item A, discussion approval, disapproval of sending the Pinal County Board of Supervisors a favorable recommendation on the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Case Number PZPA 004-14. Mr. Eckhoff will be providing a presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, currently through the, the county zoning and, and development process, there's a few general plan amendments that are, that are being discussed regarding proposed solar development projects. This particular case has been talked about in the paper a little bit, and, and there's been, you know, some discussion for and against it, and we just kind of wanted to clear, clear the air up a little bit and make sure since this property is immediately adjacent to the town limits and within our planning area, we wanted to make sure that the, that the county knew exactly where we stood on this, on this case. Beyond a staff opinion, we wanted to have a recommendation from the mayor and town council. So comprehensive, a modification to the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan, case actually already did go to the County Planning and Zoning Commission and got a favorable recommendation to their Board of Supervisors. It went to the Board of Supervisors, it's been, it has been continued. I don't know the exact data when it's going to go back, but hopefully we can, we can provide some additional information from them. But it's going to take a property that's currently in their comprehensive plan, which is equivalent to our general plan, from very low residential, which is zero to one drilling units to the acre, to general public facilities and services. And a couple images to show you where the, where the site is. And as you can see, it's immediately adjacent to our, to our corporate boundary. The town limits are in that kind of shaded yellow, yellow color with a yellow border on it. The subject site is in the, is in the red, so it's along diversion, diversion dam road. Along the north is the Bonnybrook alignment. Here's another perspective of the site that shows you its proximity to the Gila River floodplain, asphalt plant, aggregate plants. Prison Farm is immediately adjacent to it, on, to the west of the site, and that's where they've been growing, doing some fish, fish farming there on that site. And then of course, Iman is right over the canals, heading to the southeast. Told you in the, in the county comprehensive plan what the land use was on the property. In our general plan, the land use on the property primarily is a light employment and in, light industrial employment designation, as you can see on this map here. The green is the, is open space, but that's primarily there because it's identifying various canals that are going through the subject area. So there's been some discussion about whether this was a compatible or incompatible use, and also the concern about the land use designation that the applicant decided to pursue in the, in the county. That particular land use designation actually caused us some concern as well, because as we've seen with solar projects, sometimes they materialize and sometimes they don't. So you want to be a little bit cautious of changing your, changing your plan for a project that you're not completely certain is going to happen. And we expressed that concern to the county, and others have expressed that concern as well, as a valid, a valid concern. The property owner, the applicant, Sun Power, Sun Power is the same group that did the our solar plant up on Bella Vista Road, the Copper Crossing Solar Farm, and the HDR Engineering has worked on that, the property owner, Mickey, Mickey Clark and his family, and, and Pinal County. Everybody has come together to work on addressing those concerns, so that if the, if the plan is amended and the project does not materialize, there will be a contractual agreement or a development agreement, that the plan would be modified to go back to the agricultural farming type of, type of land use. Furthermore, if the Board of Supervisors were to approve the land use designation on the comp plan amendment, they would have to follow up with zoning, and that zoning would be further stipulated, so that that's the use that occurs on the property and nothing else. So they're really addressing the concerns, the what-if concerns. What if you change the comp plan? What if you get zoning for some type of industrial use, the solar farm doesn't materialize? What else could happen? Would it be a landfill? Would it be a transfer station? Would it be some type of use that really, that wouldn't be highly compatible? So we feel that those use, that those concerns are being adequately addressed in regards to compatibility, because you can see on the, on this map here, where you're kind of nudged in between floodplain and prison properties and canals and various, various structures, we feel like this actually is a, is a compatible use to what's there now, and if some of the uses were to change over time in the future, it still would be a compatible use. And in a way, a solar farm is just another way of, of, it's, it's somewhat equivalent to the farming that they've been doing out there now, but of course, they face a lot of challenges doing that type of traditional farming because of the availability of, of water, namely San Carlos water. And so a solar project utilizes very little water under the current technology, would have very little, little impact. Initially, when the project is constructed, and when it's, when it's built, it's constructed, there are some revenues that would be collected. In this case, it would be by the county for the plan review, for the inspections, for the construction sales tax. If the property were annexed at some point, ideally, the annexation would occur before construction occurs, because that is when the, there's a positive fiscal impact. Once the plant is there, really, it doesn't have a lot of employees, it's going to have one or two employees that are coming by, just checking on the site for security and for general maintenance, and I believe that they also enjoy a lower, a lower tax, tax rate than some other industrial uses. But that said, we have reviewed it and found that it would be compatible, found that it is appropriate land use here, found that they have addressed the concerns that had been raised validly. And on top of that, if the project were to come into the town, we could say that where they would be building the solar farm part of it is actually already designated as employment light industrial in our plan, so they would, they would be consistent with the town's vision for the subject area. And if you're so inclined, we would be willing to forward a general recommendation from the mayor and council to, to Pinal County.
This is a, a project that I went out and looked at, I believe Councilwoman Woolridge has also been out to the property, I don't know if any of, Tom, I know you know where the property is, Reuben, you're, you're aware of it, aren't you, and Bill? Tara, I don't know if you are, or you made yourself aware of it. All we'd be doing tonight is recommending to Pinal County to proceed with their process. Is that correct? That we approve of, of the, the use of the property, and all we're doing is saying, hey, if you want to, go ahead and approve it?
That's correct, Mayor and Council.
That it fits with our general plan for that area? Do, do we have that planned for light, light industry or light, light employment?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, we can either pass this resolution, table it while everybody goes out and takes a look at it. Mickey Clark, the landowner, is willing to take anybody that wants to go out and take a look at it and show them the property, explain who owns what around him, or, you know, whatever the council desire is, we can do, but Mickey, we'll take you around if you, if you want to before we make a decision on sending the letter to the board. Bill?
Well, I think we're all familiar with it, so...
Tara, did you have anything on it? You're okay with, Reuben? Well, then if that's the case, then we need a motion.
We make a motion to send to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors a favorable recommendation on Pinal County Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Case PZ-PA-004-14.
I second it.
We have a motion in the second to send to Pinal County Board of Supervisors a favorable recommendation on Pinal County Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Case PZPA 00414. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, there's nothing in there that says that the town will annex it, or all we're talking about is the plant, the county zone, okay? Department reports, everybody's got a copy of the department reports, any council members have any questions, the department has. Hearing none, we'll go to the call, second call of the public.
Well...
Oh, Bill, go ahead.
I guess I do, but I see she's not here, but anyway, on the, the farmer's market, or whatever you want to refer to it as, but being Jennifer's not here, I guess, and this doesn't go into effect until December the first. I think we have enough questions on this that we need to, before we implement it, I think we need to get into it a little more and try to help those people out, but...
Okay. Second call to the public. Same rules apply. You've got three minutes. If anybody would like to speak, come forward, please, and come to the podium.
Ruth Harrison, again, of Florence, Arizona. I just want to say that I think the people who are there on Saturday are aware that the new market, the farmer's market, will take place at Padiot Park on, during the week, on those alternate Thursdays, but they just want to continue on Saturday, at that spot on Main Street, and so that's, that's what all these people are here for. If you'll raise your hand, all of you, there are six of them sitting over here, well, right here, there were two other women here who were here to support this as well, and I just wanted to clarify my, my comments earlier. my comments earlier to make sure that everybody understands, so, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, uh, sooner or later, I'll call, call, call to the public. Call to the council. Ruben?
Yeah, looking at the farmer's market, I have three questions and one is, is there currently a cost for a permit or will there be? The second question I had is, who set the time as far as it being so late in the day instead of the morning? And if the, the staff can look into also, is the coordinator of the farmer's market a member of the Chamber of Commerce? Hope they could review that and check and see.
Tara?
Ruben, I too, um, wanted to touch base on the farmer's market with the fact of the matter. They've been there for so long with such history and then all of a sudden to receive a letter, not to have the answers, and then the dates taking place on the first and third Thursdays from 11 to 3. You know, especially being local, I like to shop local and the hours really need to be conducive to those that are also working as well as those that are putting on the farmer's market or the event. And, you know, traditionally, a lot of these are held on Saturdays. Um, there's not another local one within 20 miles from our area, so I know that people around here really appreciate them coming out.
I just want to thank everybody that came out for the, uh, Padilla Park, uh, ribbon cutting and dedication and the, uh, people that came out for the, uh, groundbreaking for the new, uh, library and aquatics center. We had a good turnout at both of them and I think everybody enjoyed theirsself and thank you for attending.
Valerie?
Bill stole my thunder.
Tom?
Oh, tomorrow, everybody, tomorrow's the election.
Oh, yeah. Don't forget to vote.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Everybody get out and vote. It's very important. This could be one of the most important elections of our lives.
Well, let me get at it. Friday, 7 o'clock, Coolidge, Arizona. Florence and Coolidge play in the state football tournament for, for district, division three, or four, division four.
Four, I think.
Yeah. Uh, also on Friday evening, or Friday during the day, the Florence volleyball team will be playing in Prescott Valley in the state volleyball tournament. Of course, that's where I'll be seeing my granddaughter play. Also, congratulations to Florence JV football team who went undefeated again this year. Uh, two years in a row, those kids, when they started as a freshman, they didn't lose a game as a, in the freshman last year and they didn't lose a game as JV this year. Really proud of those kids. They really come together as a, a unit. And speaking of units, that's what the council is. It's a council to put together and come out with a game plan and try to make it work. This deal with the farmer's market, while it's very heart pulling, I guess, ducking on the screens, we're doing changes in Florence, Arizona. We're trying to bring it up to what it is. If you take a look at a real farmer's market, if you go to a place that has a farmer's market, you're going to see arts and crafts and homegrown produce. That's what's going to be the farmer's market. It's not going to be a swap meet. It's not going to be a flea market. And it's structured that way. We don't know if it's going to work. We don't know if a real farmer's market will work in Florence, Arizona. We have to make sure that we've got vendors available that will bring the produce in or the farm product in. If the people don't support them and we get the vendors coming in, they won't be back and it'll fail. Are there other options to the people on, on Main Street? I was down there Saturday. Debbie, I think you, I was there and you might not like what I had to say, but I, I came and I talked to you folks. The majority of you fall under the farmer's market. But in coordinating with the, the producers of the product, you have to understand now we're in a late time. They have already made arrangements to be at different places. We're hoping we can get some of them here and by bringing the people to them where they'll, and they'll be here on a weekly basis or twice a month basis or whatever. We still have some things to work out on it and we're working on them. You have to remember that that people that are down there now, when that started, I can't remember, was I mayor, Lisa, or on the council? I can't remember. But Chris Cox came to us and, and, uh, what was it?
I have it all on my desk. I did not bring it with me.
Okay, that's fine. But that, it was a chamber function. It was put on by the Chamber of Commerce and they were supposed to be getting, I think, $5 of space down there as a fundraiser for the chamber.
Mm-hmm.
And we let it go and we've let it go all these years. We're just trying to improve what we have. If we have a farmer's market, let's have a farmer's market. Let's don't have a yard sale or a flea market. Casa Grande has a good farmer's market. I know that for a fact. They've got good produce that comes in there and that's what we need to provide to citizens of Florence, something like that. Arts and crafts at, at Christmas time are more than welcome. Arts and craft during the year is more than welcome. But I was down there for 45 minutes Saturday morning. One person came up. That was Rukie Correll and he's there every week. I didn't see that fl- great influx of people down on Main Street like what we hoped it would do. It never has done it. As Bill and Tom mentioned, tomorrow is election day. It's going to be a very important election day for the town of Florence. We're electing two, two more council people. Becky Colleen, who sits in the back, has already been elected. She will be coming on board in December. But you've got to make sure and go vote. For those of you who haven't early voted, please, please get out the vote. We don't want 10% of the voters dictating what the other 100% will be doing. We want a good turnout, a voter turnout for this election. With that, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned.